The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So there's no changes to the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carrying, open forum. Don't see anybody here.
Mr. Mayor?
Is there anybody that wants to say anything in open forum that is not present here in the council chambers? Okay. We're on to the consent agenda, approve of the minutes, bills, purchase orders, investments, tobacco license, there's also a couple donations here, resolution number 2020-64, a donation from Jim and Nancy Moos in the amount of $300 towards Melrose Fire Department. Thank you very much. And also resolution number 2020-66, donation from the Lions Club, $1,000 to the Melrose Fire Department. And just want to thank everybody for supporting our community. Tricap bus service agreement, receptionist step increase. So that's consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. We have a presentation tonight to member, Matta member George Jensen. George has been part of our community for a long time. I guess I had the pleasure to work with George on the council in Matta. But also with that, he was on the CEC, the Parks and Rec Board, the Lions, and he's also in the Legion. So the man has served his community, his country, and he's done a lot for all of us here. One thing I want to say about George, when I first was elected on the city council back in '06, you have a lot of people that start talking to you because you're the new person. And I had a couple people ask me about a specific issue. And I remember like, yeah, we need to do some change. And I just remember, you know, expressing my plight. And I just remember George said, was it just two or three people, or was it a lot? Is it the same people? You know, who are these people? But it made me think that, you know, I have to vote for the community as a whole, vote for 3,622 people. I can't just vote for, you know, one or two or three people. We have to make our decisions for the whole community and what's the better good. So that's one thing that I learned from George. And his passion for seeing our community grow, especially in Matta the last few years, it's been fun seeing different things that we can do for our community. So George, I just want to give you a little word, take a picture, and we do have a little gift for you, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right. A certificate for you.
It's crooked, can you straighten it?
Oh, no, stay there.
Straighten, can you straighten it?
I like sticking on my tongue. Just want to give you a little thing here, a little travel bag and a cup for your coffee in the morning.
Good, thank you.
So just want to say thanks for everything that you do and you continue to do for the community, especially on the Lions end and on the Legion. I appreciate you, I've learned a lot from you. Hope you stay involved with everything else and give me a call every once in a while.
I'll do that, Joe.
Let's give George a nice round of applause for everything you do. Thanks again, George. That wasn't so bad, was it, George?
Not too bad.
Okay, we are on to reports. Police department, monthly report. Craig, are you there?
I am.
All right.
So for November 2020, in our traffic area, we had 18 citations, 65 verbal warnings, 10 red warnings for the month of November 2020. We had 267 calls requests for service. Last year was 320. We ended on ICR 3520 and last year was 3987. So we're down about 467 calls pretty year overall. 2980 assists, which is normal for us. Nothing of major note for anything unless there's questions from the council.
Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
All right. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Our city attorney report won't be, Scott is not here tonight, so we'll go to our city engineer report. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's not a lot to report this month, but we have been making some progress on the county road 65 drainage problem. The contractor has kind of offered a financial solution. The, Gary and I have looked at the sag and the pipe out there, and we don't think, I'm sorry, we don't think that it's going to be a major, a long-term maintenance issue. So we're looking at a financial reimbursement from the contractor. I didn't get a chance to discuss that with Colleen today, but we'll be working on that this next month and hopefully have a resolution for the council to consider in January. The survey work has been done for the Fifth Avenue flooding study, and we should have discussion results ready for discussion in February with some options to look at there. So the only other thing is the 2021 project, and we'll be discussing that in more detail under 7C. So that's all I've got unless you have some questions.
No. Thank you, Mike.
That's good. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
City administrator report, Colleen?
So there are several items that are contained within the agenda itself, but the one, the two things that I would like to bring up under the city administrator report is that the state Minnesota did pass a business relief package for businesses. I was on a phone call today with Deed, and basically those businesses that have had to have a pause in their services or have been significantly impacted by COVID will be getting checks from the Minnesota Department of Revenue directly. So it does not have to go through the CARES Act funds. It doesn't have to go through us for our loan process. The key was, and they heard it loud and clear, is they needed to get the information in their hands as quick as possible. So those businesses could get anywhere from $15,000 up, and there's criteria about, you know, the size of the business, that type of thing. So that is the one thing I did want to mention. The other thing that I did want to mention is the governor did have a new emergency order that was put in place as of yesterday. Fitness centers are able to open up as of Saturday. They talked about education and being able to open up elementary schools after the first of the year. And then restaurants and bars are still on a pause until the 11th of January for indoor dining. They did talk about outdoor dining, that they could do that. But we live in Minnesota, so I'm not, I'm not really sure how that would work. But at any rate, that's kind of where they're at. The deed is also going to be dispersing funds to the counties. And Stearns County has a meeting on Monday. So we'll find out more about that after Stearns County meeting on Monday and how they will be getting that to the cities. So that's what I have in my report. And then again, I have other things that I will be going over throughout the agenda. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Colleen. All right, it is 6:08. This is a public hearing for the 2020 budget levy, the resolution number 2020-65. Tessa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. Tonight we have the truth and taxation hearing, which is required to do annually. I'll go over various processes such as our budget process, the levy, our spending, and our capital planning. To start with, city council and staff have had three workshops this year to go over our budget. We held our preliminary one in August, and that was to adopt our preliminary budget. And then we added a second one for October and one more in November to go over this in a little more detail. The city council, as I mentioned, adopted the preliminary budget and levy in September, and that was committed to Stearns County to prepare the truth and taxation notices that were mailed to all the property owners. Our goal when looking through our annual budget is to develop a budget that's realistic and achievable for operations. We look at future funding sources as well as future spending needs. One heavy topic of conversation this year was relating to those future funding sources and the possibility of having our local government aid cut. Also, we review our five to 10-year capital plan to look at what our saving needs are for future projects. And then with that, we try to maintain a stable tax rate for our residents and businesses. The purpose of tonight's truth and taxation hearing is to discuss our budget, to discuss our proposed tax levy, explain any increases or changes, and hear any questions or comments on this. First, I'll go over explaining the property tax methods. First off, we have our tax capacity. And this is the total value of all of the properties in the city, and that's based off of the market value of those properties, as well as the different statutory class rates, whether it's residential or commercial. That tax capacity amount is determined by Stearns County and given to the city. And then that is taken as a percentage of our levy that we adopt, and that's what determines the estimated tax rate. And that tax rate percentage is what's applied to each individual property, and that determines the taxpayer's liabilities. One big thing that we've discussed is how do we compare with other cities. Melrose is that dotted line, as you can see, kind of right in the middle. We trend fairly steady. For 2021, I don't have all of the other cities' final numbers yet because they're still in the process of it. We have until the end of the month to certify those. Looking at our history for market value, you can see an upward trend in the value of properties in our city, and this is also relating to new properties being built, as well as additions happening. And our tax capacity, as I mentioned previously, this is what determines the tax rate that's applied to taxpayers. For 2021, it's estimated just shy of 2.5 million. So there are a number of reasons of why taxes can change for properties. This can be the value of the property change, other values surrounding you. It could be because of the city budget and levy change, township, county, school district, if there's assessments added, aid from the state or federal aid. There's a number of reasons that play into that. For Melrose, looking ahead at our proposed 2021 tax levy, for the general fund, we have proposed $1,400,000. In 2020, it was $1,285,000. So that is an increase. The city holds one remaining bond, a 2013 bond. For 2021, we have $90,000 for the levy. And this brings our total levy to $1,490,000. Comparing that to 2020 of $1,380,000 is a $110,000 increase. However, as I stated on the previous slides, that tax capacity has been growing due to new additions in town, new valuations, as well as if properties previously had tax increment financing, and those are now on the tax roll. So that reduced the hit to the tax rate, and the increase is approximately 1.45%. So the dollar amount has increased, but for each individual taxpayer, that's an increase of about 1.45%. For our debt, as I mentioned, we have one bond. This was originally issued at $1,965,000. We still have $1,120,000 remaining. So that's about $150,000 annually a year, and then we will be paying that through February of 2028. Looking back at our tax levy over the last 10 years, you can see there have been slight increases that has held steady for quite a few number of years. And right below that top chart shows the changes in it. There was a decrease in 2012, and then it had slight increases up until 2021. However, when you look at the tax rate, and this is what a property owner will feel, that change in the tax rate, that has had a slight decrease the last couple of years, and as I mentioned, about 1.5%, just under for 2021. Looking forward to our budget, for the general fund in 2021, we are budgeting $2,807,921. When you compare this to 2020 at $2,943,688, we're looking at a decrease in revenues of about 4.8%. The biggest change in this, as I mentioned, is the unknown with the state aid, with our local government aid. We are budgeting that at 80% of our certified amount. We have not heard yet what the, what kind of changes may come into play with the state's budget. That can be reduced or unallotted at any time in the year. So because of the current situation, we had some unease that if we would receive that money or not. So we have budgeted that at a slightly or significantly less amount. Looking at the sources of the general fund, revenues, property taxes would make up 50% of the revenue budget. State aids are 28%. About 15% is made up from franchise fees from the electric department. And then we have miscellaneous charges and licenses. Local government aid, as I mentioned, is a big portion of about that 28%. There were decreases of about 2012, and it stayed steady for a couple of years, moved up slightly in 2014, and started trending up a little more to 2020. And the decrease that we are estimating is approximately $156,000. Now, looking at the expenditures, we, for 2021, we budgeted $2,889,562 compared to $2,938,49. So we have a decrease in expenditures budgeted of about 1.7%. So when planning for that reduction of aid, we also went through all the line items and tried to find where we can reduce our operating expenses, as well as capital transfers to our capital improvement fund. In our general fund, public safety makes up about 28% of the budget, with streets making up 18%. 29% are transfers out, and this can be transferred to our special revenue funds. Most of that relates to transfers for our capital project fund. And then admin and finance are about 15%. Looking at our general fund expenditures over the last 10 years, there's been some slight increases, remain fairly steady, and then, as I said, we are budgeting a decrease from 2020. And this chart shows some of the variations over the last 10 years of the percentage. So there was a large decrease in 2012, and then about 2% to 4%. Last year it was significantly higher. We pre-funded some of those electric projects, so most of that increase relates to that transfer out that I was explaining. And now we have a decrease planned for next year. That was a summary of our general fund. We have a number of other governmental funds as well. Our special revenue funds, these are our Matta funds. We have the senior center tricap, the yellow bike program, we have a CBVG grant, our ambulance fund, and fire department. Many of these are about break even. Some are spending down reserves, some are saving a couple. We also have our capital projects. Our big one is our capital improvement fund. This fund is budgeting a surplus of about $522,000, but keep in mind, most of those capital expenditures are coming in 2022, hopefully with the bridge and further on after that. We also, with that project, have a Fifth Avenue Bridge project and a number of TIB funds, and those are all in and out funds, so they don't have a net budget. And as I mentioned, we have one debt service fund. We are budgeting a levy of $90,000. There's also about $52,000 that comes from rent from the fire and ambulance station, and then about $151,000 in debt service cost. The Public Utility Commission has approved the 2021 budget. And here's a little summary of it. The lighter green is 2020, the darker green is 2021, just to kind of show the difference. The main thing that you will see here in the sewer is their capital of about $11 million, a little more than that. That's relating to the wastewater treatment plant project. And electric revenues and expenses have some decreases, and that's based off of better forecasting of some of the industries. Now, looking forward, this year was a big year on analyzing the revenues coming in, how we're spending it. We looked at it as a kind of a multifaceted approach. We wanted to, if we had that reduction in revenues, we didn't want to just plug that in with the levy. We looked all over. So we looked at reducing our operating expenses, which I touched on. We looked at, are we able to push capital projects off, or have we been pre-funding those enough that we can dial back a little bit on the savings for those? We also looked at our fund reserves and felt that they were at a fairly healthy balance, where we could pull into some of our savings accounts and use some of that to reduce that. While using our reserves is beneficial in years like this, when we may lose some of our state aid, obviously budgeting at a deficit, which we have at about $81,000 for next year, isn't sustainable year after year. So we wanted to see how can we burden some of that risk now without setting up a harder, or more variations for our taxpayers going forward. So we planned out about five years and just looked at what could happen, what would that look like? For the estimated tax capacity, we saw about a 5% growth for 2021, and I estimated another 5% for 2022 based off of some properties that will be coming onto the tax roll. Then we did 3% each year after that. For the property tax levy, we increased that roughly $10,000 for 2022. And that would be a decrease in our tax rate of about 2.83%. And after that, then we started plugging in that levy to, you know, use some of our reserves these next two years, and then what would we need going forward, projecting about a 3% increase in expenses. So as you can see, it keeps our tax rate kind of spreading that out evenly without having a huge swing in ups and downs. Finally, another fund that we spend a lot of time looking at is our capital improvement fund, and this fund is our long-term savings. This allows the city to kind of manage our tax rate by putting money away ahead of time and saving for these projects, and also reducing our risk, or reducing our need to bond for those. So we look at those projects with the different department heads, with our engineers, with city staff, with council, driving around, looking at what projects need to be done and planning for those, as well as are we able to push some of those back? We also look at different funding means. Is there state funding or federal funding available? Are there grants that we can obtain to help reduce some of the expenditures on the city's side? This chart just shows the spending for the next five years for our capital fund compared to the reserves. The biggest line is that yellowish line for public works, that's our reserve. But as you can see in '22 with the screen, that's the capital outlay planned for, and so that reserve balance then starts dipping down through spending away that money. With that, I will open it up for any questions.
All right. It is a public hearing, so if there is anybody listening that would like to ask some questions of Tessa, please feel free to talk. All right, it's 6:24. We will be, it'll turn over to the council now. So here, yes, I just said 6:24, we'll close the, yeah, we'll close the meeting at 6:24. In the public?
Yes.
Okay. And then we had to do it after. All right. So here, if anybody would like to talk, I'd like to just go in order. Anybody want to say? Want to go first?
About what?
Do you want to talk, have any questions?
Oh, no, I'll, I'll just point out, I did request to have the 10-year total budget graph put in there because I don't know, when we talk about the actual levy, 99% of the time, we talk about the levy and how much we're going to levy. But that's only really, what was that, about half to 45, maybe a little over half, the entire actual budget. So we do have substantial sources of revenue coming in from other sources also, the internal transfers from electrical. And so the reason why I wanted that in there was because, and maybe even more for myself, was so I could look at, how much is our total budget going up? I mean, it's one thing to say we're taxing the residents this much directly by us, from us, but how much are we actually spending? How much, how much are we increasing our spending over the last 10 years? So when you look at the numbers, it's about 4%, it looks like about 4% is what we're actually budgeting every year increase, about 4% a year over the 10 years. So compounding it, it turns out it's from $2.1 million to $2.8 million, something like that. So that was just because we could have $5 million coming in from other sources one year and $3 million another year, but it doesn't ever, we don't ever get that total budget picture historically. So I just thought that was beneficial for everybody, just another way to look at how the city is handling the funds that are coming in, not only from the levy, but other sources also.
No, and I appreciated that. Is there anybody else that would like to say anything?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thanks, Tessa.
All right. First action item is to take action adopting the proposed resolution for this. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. The council to take action adopting the 2020, 2025, five-year capital improvement plan. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Now it's 6:27. The meeting, the public hearing is closed. Action item, police policy updates. Who would be taking that? Craig? Craig, are you still there?
Yep, I am.
You want to go over your policy update?
Yeah, so the state has required that there is an update to our use of force and deadly force policies. The majority of what was in there was covered under the updated policy, but what needed to be included was a removal of what is defined as chokeholds, as well as having some definitions, maybe modified or changed to coincide with the model policy or the policy the state is looking for. We went through and did all those updates. Doesn't appear to be any issues. We sent it into the state. They said it's substantially cleared, so it means that it's, it's good to go. So we just need council approval to add it back into our, or add and modify or update version into our policy manual.
All right.
So Chief, as I looked at it, and as I'm listening to you, it was primarily neck restraints and positional asphyxia, correct?
Right. Right.
Can I get a motion to approve the policy change, update?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ordinance number 12-17-2020, an ordinance summarizing and reaffirming fees for city license, permits, services, establishing a schedule of fines, review, modification, and amendment. Can, is there any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 2021 street improvements. Mr. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you go to 2021, I neglected in my report to talk about the bridge. And Tessa's presentation reminded me that we will be applying for a local road improvement grant for the bridge. The legislature funded 75 million for local road improvements this year. So, and they also raised the limit for non-state aid cities from 750,000 to 1.125 million. I don't know that we'll be able to take advantage of that full amount on the bridge project, but I think what we can apply for probably will be certainly our street costs related to First Street North realignment and then the cost of the bridge, like sidewalk and those types of things that will be eligible under the state requirement. So, hopefully, we're successful in that and can reduce the cost of that project, so.
Mike, as long as you mention the bridge, I know we've had some issues with DNR. Are we kind of on track with permitting and surveys and so on and so forth? Because I think we're getting close to about a year away from actually doing something.
Yeah, we're getting closer. Our group is, we had a discussion a week or two ago about, we're still working on some tweaks to the site distance of the left-turn lane of coming off of First Street looking north. We're doing a little, probably some shifting around. I talked to the project manager today, and they're finishing up one more option that we can look at. Hopefully, it'll be done by the end of the night tonight or tomorrow morning. But yeah, I think progress with the DNR is good so far. So, I think we're going to be getting back on schedule here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 2021 improvements, I did pass out. I forgot to put a copy in for the overhead. But the 2021 project includes River Heights Drive from the cul-de-sac on the west end all the way up to Second Avenue Northeast, then Hillcrest Avenue. We did complete pavement corrings on that and evaluated that. And our recommendation is that we do a full reclaim, which is grinding up all the vituinous with the gravel. We'll be excavating about six inches and then putting that existing gravel back in, and then three and a half inches of new vituinous. Gary and I did kind of watch the project today. There are some curb issues that maybe if we can kind of take a look at some of these pictures. I guess our question is how in-depth we want to get with things related to the curb that may be more aesthetic and not as much functional. You know, this, we probably want to repair. I mean, that's fairly severe. And maybe, next slide, please. You can see some of the offset curbs here. Some of these things could be repaired. And these are some of the more extreme, but I guess we're looking for some direction from the council on how involved with curb and gutter. Do we want to go beyond the maybe functionally necessary and take some of the maybe just more aesthetically unpleasing things out, I guess. We all like to have a new street that doesn't look quite finished, if you know what I mean. We did budget, I think originally, for about removing and replacing about 150 feet of curb. I think what Gary has marked up there as necessity probably is within that limit.
Your entry is not valid.
Some of these things that, you know, we probably necessarily didn't include all, like driveway aprons, those type of things that would be nice to do, but maybe not necessary. This one does have a little bit of wing on it. You know, see, we've got... This one does have a wing, but a lot of the driveways come out straight. The current policy is to have a wing on it. I don't personally feel that we need to remove those and add wings. I think it adds a lot of expense without necessarily a lot of benefit in function.
Question? Yeah, real quick, that's obviously somebody paid to have that done. That's their driveway, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if you're wondering about pulling that from the breakout?
Yeah, I think probably what we would do is probably saw cut it along here and then saw cut it back here and replace that piece. Certainly, if property owners wanted to have more work done beyond the back of the curb, I think we could probably try to get them a price from the contractor if they wanted to negotiate a private improvement.
I was just curious, because, you know, obviously, that was done by a private party. Now, it comes to the city, does the city take care of the problem or not? I know it's split hairs, it's part of the project.
And Gary can probably attest to it too, you know, plow could have got too close or whatever.
That's true.
You know, or, but the thing is, if it gets, you know, off-center, you don't want the plow to hit that and wreck that blade either, you know, so they can go every which way.
I mean... Is that, so that road, when you guys review it, is it, like, I drove it today just to see once how bad it was, and it's really like, it's mounted pretty high in the middle. Like, is that road going to be more flat when this is done?
Yeah, we would restore like a 2% crown. I mean, normally, and I didn't measure it out there, but it is, why it is, I don't know, but you're right, it is more.
Yeah, I just didn't know, like, if some of that is caused from so much water sitting? Like, the road not handling some of the slope of the water going towards the drains and like...
No, I don't think so. I think, you know, perhaps some of these things is that water in the gutter may pond, and then it kind of gets under the wear course and seal coat types of things. So, we want to make sure that the water runs away, you know. As Joe was mentioning, if we've got a one-inch or two-inch offset in the curb, that can hold water and pond along the curb line. So, we certainly want to take care of those things. Just general cracks that may not be offset. I don't know that we want to go in and try to repair all those. Maybe flip through the pictures here. You know, I guess this is one that, yeah, it's pretty ugly. You know, does it, is it causing a problem? Today, it probably isn't, it's not offset, but we might want to take out that section. Maybe, next picture. But this is one of the driveways that see that doesn't have a, doesn't have the normal links on it. And I don't know that we would want to replace that. I don't see a huge benefit. It might not be the best looking. You know, some of the aprons are cracked through the gutter. But I think it'll probably function fairly well for the next 30 years. Storm sewer, this is a block-built storm sewer structure. You can kind of see the big voids in here. There's a lot of dirt that runs in when the water runs in through the concrete and it kind of undermines the street and then the curb settles. So, this one definitely we're going to replace. And we want to look at, during the design, I think we want to look a little bit closer at some of the other ones, probably, you know, maybe get some of the leaves out and take a better look at them. So, I guess what we're requesting tonight is just some direction on curb and gutter removal. And certainly, we can come with a preliminary estimate of the removals that, you know, we think need to be done, then maybe take pictures of some optional ones and let the council decide, you know, if they want to spend some additional money and take care of these things.
Yeah, Gary?
I just want to make a comment. That road was built in 1975, so it's 45 years old. You know, and if we do it, we're probably not going to look at it for another 25 to 30 years. So, you know, the consideration you have to give is, do you want to put a few extra dollars? You know, some of it might be cosmetic, but you know, there's some in that period that do need attention. You know, that's your decision. It might be a little bit more than we have budgeted, but it'll be done, you're purely right. You're still going to have some issues, you know, with smaller cracks, but we went ten to those. But there are some areas where two curb sections are settled. You know, it'd be nice to fix it. It's going to be a 30-year build.
I think between you two gentlemen and your experience, that you can probably come up with some consensus areas that you both feel need to be, you know, removed and replaced. If there's a handful where you really can't say one way or another, like Mike said, you know, you throw it at us and say, "Okay, this one's $800, and this one's $1,000, and that one's $400," you know, if you're just not comfortable. But I think between the two of you, there's enough experience here where you gentlemen definitely know better than we do what needs to be removed and replaced.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. We just wanted to run it by and make you aware that there may be a few things that maybe initially weren't budgeted that we may want to take care of.
I just got, just a real quick question. On your note, you said 1971?
1975.
So, your road is 45?
Forty-five years old.
It lasted, and we haven't done another globally on it?
We still call it 1982, 1993, 2006, 2014.
Okay.
And that's very valuable cost, if you want...
Yeah, yeah. On that note, do we need to do a total reclaim on it?
Yeah, that vituinous is just...
Well, no, I mean, reclaim is when you grind up the asphalt, you grind it into the sub-bass. It costs a little bit more, correct?
More than a mill and overlay?
Yeah, standard mill and overlay.
Yeah.
So, I'm just wondering, if it lasted 45 years, without, you know, why are we doing a reclaim? If we just, we could just do a mill and overlay.
If you want to drive on Country Club Road, that wasn't mill and overlay, then cracks were cracked within a year. I mean, if you do this right, you're not talking about $4, but you're going to get a heck of a lot better road for a lot more years. You know, Fleet Cracks sealed that two years after it was, it was a mill and overlay, it was a pond, unbelievable, the cracks that came back.
Wow, cracks are going to happen in armor pavement from expansion, crack?
Yeah, I could maybe answer that. I mean, at some point, a mill and overlay just isn't going to give you the strength that you need. The vituinous on this, and I don't have pictures of the samples, and I thought I maybe included them in your package, but I didn't actually bring the quarters. But they kind of deteriorate from the bottom up. You know, we talked a little bit before. The seal coating takes care of the deterioration from the top, but the moisture, you know, the oil kind of leashes out of the bottom and it dries out from the bottom. So, the pavement there really doesn't have a whole lot more strength than gravel. The chip ceiling is holding it together right now, but if we go in there to mill, I think we're going to end up with powder. And then we're going to be back to the council saying, "This mill isn't working, we need to reclaim it." So, I would strongly not recommend a mill and overlay because I think it'll be failure for sure. There's just not enough base strength there to, number one, mill it without busting up a majority of the leftover. And then certainly, when you run the loaded trucks on it, I think you're going to bust up the rest.
I was thinking total, total mill. Take all the asphalt off, don't it?
Well, and that's not a... That's not a lot different in cost than what we're doing. I mean, essentially, we're recycling that. I mean, we're, we usually give the contractor the option to take it off or grind it up. I mean, we'll specify it as a removal, but we want to recycle as much of that material as we can. You know, that ground-up vituinous makes a pretty big gravel. So, we're going to get three and a half inches of additional gravel.
Mix in with the base.
Yeah, we have the days.
Does that go into the new book in this, or is that your base?
That's the base. It's the gravel base, yeah. It doesn't get recycled into the vituinous. That'll be all new material.
Okay. Well, as for the concrete part of it, I agree with Bunker. You guys decide for the better good of the community that way. I always say needs and wants is something I hopefully consider. And I leave that in your guys' hands with that.
Mr. Mayor, we do have to approve.
Yeah, so I guess the action we're looking for tonight is authorization for WSB to start the preliminary and final design for the 2021 improvements. We had estimated a fee of $29,388. And that includes the design specification bidding, construction administration, and an estimated $100 of construction observation. We're thinking that this is probably about a 10-working day or a two-week project to remove and replace it. We did meet with Roger Avilcar today, and he's going to put in some conduit prior to the start of the project. So, he'll have it done as soon as the frost is out. And then by the time we get started, it'll be, it won't delay the contractor at all. So, he's going to take care of that with his forces.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve that, please?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. All right, comp time, policy change.
So, as part of the negotiations that we had this year with both the ASB Union and LELS, there were two things that were negotiated for both of those contracts that are included in our personnel policy. So, they are what need to change for the city overall. The first one that we're going to be addressing is the comp time policy change. It's just merely a language cleanup. So, before, it was unclear. If somebody accrued 24 hours of comp time, they could spend that comp time down and reaccrue it, and that's, you know, what people were doing. And we basically said, nope, you get 24 hours or three shifts of comp time per calendar year. So, you can't, you know, take 24, spend it all down, accrue 24 again, spend it all down. And so, we clarified that so that it was just per calendar year. So, that is my recommendation, is that that, that the council adopt that policy change for the comp time.
Can I get a motion to approve the new policy?
So move.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Let's see here, cell phone policy change.
So, actually, in August, no, July of 2019, there were some significant changes to the cell phone device policy. And that was when the hands-free law went into effect. And so, we changed it for that. However, the part that we hadn't changed was the cost share related to cell phones, and we want to get away from that. So, basically, what we're saying is, you either carry a city-owned cell phone or you carry your own cell phone. Those are the options that you have. We only have to, and we're actually trying to get away from people having their city-owned cell phone. We're actually trying to get to the point where people just carry their own phones because of the smartphones, et cetera. And so, we eliminated that second option. And what we're basically saying is, there's really two ways to do the cost share or the stipend if you own your own phone. If you do not have to have data on your phone, then you get reimbursed at a rate of $25. If you are required to still carry a phone, and if you need data on your phone, then you get reimbursed at a rate of $50. So, for example, the SCADA system are, anything related to our customer service portal or the electric, anything that has to do with our alarm systems, those departments have to carry, they have to have that on their phone. So, that's additional data. So, they will be getting paid at that monthly stipend of $50, whereas anybody else who has to carry or carries a cell phone can get paid at that non-data plan. Again, the difference being is if we require that they have the systems on their phone. So, in the case of SCADA system, you know, customer service portal, anything like that, then they get reimbursed at the higher rate.
So electrical and wastewater are probably the fifty dollar an hour people.
Yep, yep. That would be probably it.
All right.
Gary, do any of your guys use, I mean, like, I guess I'm thinking like data, I mean, using it with the map on it when they're blowing snow or like, if you tell them to go somewhere and they're not.
Times it's used, like a good example is if we're on Fifth Avenue and we have to do some you know, recording of a storm sewer, you know, there are certain times you do.
Right. I mean, I'm thinking like even email or any of that stuff. I mean, if if we only pay somebody for that, is it going to be like, wow, I'm only checking my email when I go back to the office or, you know, I think, I I don't know, I'm just.
So one of.
Like, what's the cost difference from what we're switching to? Are we, are we saving a bunch of money from it or is it actually?
No, it's costing us more.
It's costing us more to move towards this way?
Yes, but what it's doing is it's getting rid of that.
The city.
It, and it was a negotiation as part of the union contracts, you know. They are saying, look, we have to carry all this data on our phones and it's costing us so much more to have this. So that was part of the union negotiations is to get that higher stipend.
I'm just more or less saying like, where do we draw, who do we draw the line to that says, well, you don't need the data on your phone?
Well, I think everyone, their own phones, they carry data, you know, and everybody carries data. Like everybody, even the admin staff has data on their phone.
Oh, you haven't seen my phone.
Um, but I guess it's a matter of what the expectation is, you know, as you're, as the administrator, uh, you guys can get ahold of me in theory twenty-four seven. And so obviously, that's the case for me. Your department heads, you need, they need to be at that higher rate because not only do they have to be available, but there are different things for that. Uh, people that have to have data, like electric and wastewater, because it's a SCADA system,
Yeah.
that they have to have those alarms on their phones, they would be paid at that. Now, as far as other folks, whether it's admin or the street department, um, one thing, uh, Gary's department does have, they don't use it. Um, it's underutilized right now, but it does, we did purchase an iPad for them to be able to carry out in the field with them. So we do, they do have that capability to have to pull up the maps or whatever. They have that iPad with a tough case and everything.
Okay.
Um, and I believe that iPad does have a data plan on it. It's not, it's underused, but it certainly is one where you could pull up the GIS, you could do all those things with that iPad. Now, I believe that both the electric, uh, the wastewater doesn't, but the electric also has an iPad that they bring out in the field. Um, you know, so it's just a matter of, I think the the distinction, what you choose to do, you choose to do, but the distinction and the reason we negotiate that as part of the union thing is their argument was, well, we we have to have a SCADA system. You're making us carry the SCADA system and on our phones, the alarm system essentially. That takes up data. So that's kind of the distinction.
Just was asking, because I don't know, like, the reason why the iPads underutilized is because you guys all have phones. Uh, why carry a big iPad? I don't know, is that?
Well, iPad is up here now. I think Lisa's using it. So it is used.
Right, okay.
All right.
No, I'm fine with Oliver. I just was bringing it up, like, who's making the call whether or not you can have data or you get paid twenty-five dollars or you get paid fifty?
Yeah, and I think the only way you, again, make the distinction is if it's something that the, I mean, to me, that's the only way you can kind of define that. I don't know otherwise. Otherwise, I'd have everybody saying, you know, I'd have all the admin staff saying, well, you know what, I check my emails too, type of thing, so.
And I recall in our discussions, the major thing, point was that electrical and wastewater have to be able to access that data very readily, very quickly from their personal phones because of pumps and and, you know, towers and stuff like that. So, you know, power usage changes, the alarms, pumps not running, wells not kicking in, so.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the new policy change for the cell phones? Can you second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The ASME contract um is finalized now, right?
Yep, so the ASME contract was approved by the um Public Utilities Commission. So we are asking for the council to approve that as well this evening. It was negotiated in good faith with the uh, their union steward and the members of ASME and they have signed off on it.
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, LE LS contract is also finalized, right?
Yep, so the LES, LE LS contract was actually mailed to you guys earlier. There was just a couple of language changes that the LE LS wanted to make sure that we included in there and that it was clarified and we did do that. So um, that is another one that is ready for council approval.
Yeah, and also, uh, we did a one-year contract instead of.
One year on both of them, yep. And the reason we did that is because of the insurance. I know there is a very strong desire to move to a two or three-year contract. I mean, kind of silly on our part. I don't know why we decided to torture ourselves with just a one-year contract, but it just made sense because we just didn't know where we were at with the insurance. So um, there is a very strong desire to tie it now into a two to three-year contract after this year. So we'll be working on that again this summer.
All right.
In twenty-one.
Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So move.
Can you second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, review emergency order, resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty-three.
So this is the emergency order that you put in place um during a special go-to meeting that we had, I believe, yes. Or was that the last council meeting?
That's special.
No, we had a special meeting. And what was interesting is two days or a day after you guys put this in place, we had to use it. So we had a situation where we had to put together a memorandum of understanding between the ambulance and center care. And so um, you know, by having that emergency order in place, we didn't have to convene the whole council, although we did call, I called everyone individually um to see what your thoughts were about it, but uh Joe had and myself had the ability then to go ahead and get that contract signed and taken care of because it was an immediate thing. So that's an example of where it was used. This emergency order does go through March of twenty twenty-one. So um, you know, I, I think that um with the stuff that we're doing with um, like, you know, vaccinations and and all the COVID stuff that's coming through the county, I certainly as staff would just recommend that you keep it in place. And I think like we talked about before, between myself and the mayor, we were very good about making sure that, you know, I'll call everyone individually if that's how I'm directed to do it, just to talk to you about everything and keep you apprised.
All right.
I'll make a motion, just to leave it the way we got it known.
Bring it up again, next one.
Review.
I want to make sure that we bring it up under an X meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All right, first, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Um, new businesses, liquor license fees.
So in twenty, there was a pause by the bars and restaurants from March, I believe, until, I can't remember if it was June, but anyway, uh, the council, at that time, you guys elected to prorate the liquor license fees for those businesses that were affected by the pandemic.
And we're talking just the on-sale license fees?
Um, yes.
The on-sale, Sunday on sale, so you did those two.
Yeah.
So you did, not off-sale.
No, you didn't do off-sale, but you did the on-sale, yes. And so obviously those same businesses are now paused again in their operations and they're not able to meet and we're coming up on their liquor license fees that would normally be mailed out in January to get, you know, to get paid. So a typical on-sale is like seventeen hundred dollars, I believe. So, and I think I, we also sent you as part of that, um, a comparison of what other communities are doing. Most other communities, they don't have to pay them until June and so they haven't made any decisions yet. But I just bring it up to your attention it, um, to see if there's anything that you would like to do differently with the liquor license renewals.
Do we have a certain fee that has to be paid? Like, do we have filing fees on that or like, I mean, is there anything that really has to be paid on that?
From ours perspective?
Right.
Yes. Or is that just the license that we made that was seventeen hundred dollars and?
Goes right into the general fund.
Okay.
They do have a state license fee that they pay in addition to ours for their liquor license from the state, right? Am I correct in saying that?
They do on the two AM, the other, no.
Oh, they don't.
And they have to buy their um, their card to to purchase the on-sale liquor, but yeah.
So can we prorate the twenty twenty-one fees to account for losses of potential revenue in twenty twenty due to the fact that they weren't open and they weren't selling anything?
Are you, so you're saying get rid of, like, this year, they're going to get a liquor license free of cost for twenty twenty?
Well, I don't know necessarily free of cost, but if we can prorate it at fifty percent or something because there are probably going to be some hardships up until March of this year, we know. And and whatever, whatever the number is, gentlemen, I'm not saying fifty percent is the number.
I.
But they've been getting spanked pretty hard here in twenty twenty and there's been periods of time where no, where theoretically you can't walk in and order a beer or a drink and socialize. So they're, they were making nothing on their on-sale.
I was going to propose, Bunker, that and if everybody else agrees, but twenty twenty-one, I mean, no, you don't have to pay for on-sale liquor license and some liquor license on sale because they're hard, even if we fifty percent it, I mean, they're still getting hit very hard right now. In the wintertime is their busiest time, July, June, June, July, August. People are at the lakes, they don't have bonfires there. So I I really don't consider that, even if you prorate in the summertime, that's not their busy time. The wintertime is when they're getting hit hard and now they're getting shut down from the end of November to, who knows, I mean, I don't know, middle of January is even something to get pushed to the middle of February, but then some of our bars, that's, that's it, that's. So I, I would have no problem doing that. I don't know what everybody else feels, but it'd be our way of, I guess, helping them a little bit. They don't have to have some worry about that at all.
I don't even know if it's, you know, it's probably the more ethical thing to do because you're charging a fee for that, for a license they can't even use.
Right.
Well, to issue a license though, and and maybe I'm going at this wrong, even if it's a ten-dollar administrative processing fee, I think we have to charge them something for the license.
And and I find that that's.
Yeah, you know, and I don't, you know, I don't know what's appropriate, a very small amount just for the administrative processing fee and it can be a small amount.
I think it should be.
I think we have to charge them something because otherwise we're just giving away a lot, you know what I mean?
Right, and I was just going to propose that only for twenty twenty-one. I mean, after that.
And only for holders of license in twenty twenty.
Right.
Right.
So I can't go apply for liquor license and sure get.
Yes.
I can't have party's in my backyard every Saturday night and charge?
I guess you get a point on that.
And a small fee just because then, like you said, it'd show documentation that whoever had it had.
You know, and a minor fee, just a processing fee for the license. We're not making anything off of it. It's just a minor processing fee, I think, is a little bit better way of going about it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's super minor, that we're not.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think that is like Tony said, that's just.
Because they were shut down like April.
Shows good faith that we're trying to do our best.
April, May and most of June.
Yep, so mid-March to June.
Limited occupancy, latter part of June, July, August.
And then November, they were shut down again?
What month is that collected in?
Hmm?
What month is the, the month?
Jan, January.
So it runs from January to January?
So our licenses actually, I send the letter all because they have to still give their liquor license insurance and stuff. So I give them plenty of time to, like, modify them January because I have to have everything back by, I usually on the February council, then I have to send everything to the state and then they send, they sign off on it. I mean, even though there's no fee, they still have to go to the state, they still have to sign off on it. So it is a process. So it starts and I get it off to them as soon as I can so they're aware of it, that they can start getting their uh insurance renewal for their liquor liability and that thing. But their license is actually run from March first to March first.
Okay.
You okay with that?
I find that that I don't know, do we have to set a fee limit? I mean, what are, what are we thinking? Ten bucks?
Ten bucks. Do well I cover your postage and everything else with?
I mean, we're, I I think at this point, we're willing to eat, eat the labor cost, the whatever Patty's got in it.
The other thing you can look at is they're paying property taxes on a facility they can't use also.
I agree.
So it's not like we're just refunding all of their taxes that they're paying, so portion of it.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we reduce the on-sale liquor license fee for two thousand and twenty-one for any business that have an on-sale liquor license in twenty twenty. We reduce the price to a ten-dollar fee for twenty twenty-one.
Does that include Sunday?
I'll second that, but include Sunday with that, so the Sunday on sale also.
You good with that?
Yep.
I agree. So there was a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. All right, we're on the information items. Twenty twenty-one boards committees commission. There's some applications out there and there are some that, um, planning and zoning. Uh, there's one for MATA, there's one for Melrose Housing Redevelopment Authority, Parks and Rec Board. Um, so if anybody's interested, they can apply online or or call City Hall and uh we can give you more information. And then there was a utility meeting, utility commission meeting minutes. So anyways, if there's nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Can you get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.